Select Board, as always, would invite you to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States of America and to the Republic.
Our first order of business is a. Public hearing. And we'll read it in accordance with Mass General law, chapter one sixty-six, section twenty-two, and the Bellingham Code of Bylaws that only the Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, May sixth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. Municipal Center Arcane Meeting Room on the Joint Petition Horizon National Grid Plan. Three oh nine, three two six zero one to install one. J O pole or one dash twenty-five on Bellingham Street. Also permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires. And they mentioned public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings. As the petitioners may desire for disintubated purposes, distributing purposes. View the plans ahead of meeting and see Hillary Alley. Uh, do we have the petitioner on the line? I see a phone number seven seven four. Would you be the petitioner?
Yes, hi, Al Galvin, National Grid designer.
Very good. Uh, I guess the immediate question is, uh. What is the timing of this event? And do you anticipate the road being cut up at all?
Uh, just, just the, uh, the spot where they got insert. Insert the, you know, the underground lines, which is, you know, maybe thirty inches wide and the actual pole location. Um, it's in a, it's in a very. Uh, from what I was shown, it's in a pretty calm area and. Not a, not interfering with traffic or any of those things.
Is it an area that would have a police detail when, when the work is done?
If that, yes, they were telling me if that lot. Right behind it isn't cleared out for the truck to use. Uh, there's kind of grass. You know, open spot there, but if that's still kind of, that's still got vegetation, things of that nature. Um, they probably will have a police detail there for the, for the time they'll need.
Any other questions? It's pretty straightforward. And you're all set. I see you shaking your head that you're good to go.
I'm good to go.
Uh, we have only Bellingham Town employees in the audience, so I assume that there's, uh, no questions from the public. Uh, that said, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I need a second, so Ann, you'll be saying. We'll do Mike and Sahan. Uh, entertain a motion to approve, to approve the petition as read. Person second. Here we know further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Pose none, four oh. Thank you very much, sir. Well, sign it and Hillary will take care of the rest.
Thanks very much. Have a good night.
Al, how you doing? Um, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about another, um, address in town on Depot Street. Have you, uh, I know, I think you did a walk out there for a relocation of a pole.
Right, yeah, there's a couple of different jobs because it was broken up into parts, but yeah.
So have you.
No, uh, the, I believe. They haven't, uh, had scheduled, they haven't scheduled the petition yet for the. For the pole move on the street side, coming across the street. So, you know, that's, that's still in the works. I think, I think we gotta get a sketch over and things of that nature.
So the pole across the street does have to move?
Uh, I'm trying to remember, I believe. No, I'm sorry, you're right. The one in the corner by the building is moving. That's right. Oh, yeah, you just reminded me, the real estate rep came back and said they will be able to put the pole in, there's a small right of way there, parcel A. And I, I guess that's where they agreed upon state's location is right there. So they'll, uh, real estate's gonna be sending out some, some paperwork to process soon.
So Al, um, we, uh, submitted an application, uh, and agreed to an easement on both parcels. We listed the book and page for both parcels. And we did that, we did that in January, and here we are sitting in, um, you know, the first of May here. And we're building a building and, and we can't go any further because the, uh, transmission line's in the way. And we found out today that we now we have to file another easement. Um, to, um, locate the poles in parcel A, which we listed that parcel on the original easement to begin with. Arlene from your company, uh, we finally got on the phone this afternoon. I don't know if you know Arlene or not. Eileen?
Oh, oh, yes, yeah.
I know you went out there originally and you met with the contractor and I know you were familiar with the area that the pole had to go in, but. It never made it, uh, any further. In your company, um, to, to further the, um, the easement correctly. Poles have to be placed, but if there's anything you could do, we'd greatly appreciate it. We're, we're almost at a standstill right now.
Okay, so now where, where we staked it out, where it's currently staked now near the kind of the fence line, is that, is that in parcel A?
That is parcel, that is parcel A, but I don't see any of your stakes there. I don't see a national grid stake.
I remember I staked it there for the two poles. I'd staked it there and I, I think we painted the top of it white. I, I don't know if they've been removed since the work's been going on, but.
I'm not sure, but there, there's no, there are no, uh, stakes there now.
Okay, I'll touch base with, uh, I believe it was Lori, Lori in, um, real estate and Eileen. And see, uh, you know, if we have to, if we can stake it maybe a couple of feet over, so it's just in the, in the lot, not in parcel A, maybe that speeds things along. She said if it wasn't in parcel A, they already had an easement for it. But because this was being requested to be in parcel A, they needed to seek another easement. Um, maybe there's a line there where we could stake it where it's still outside the building for you, but it keeps it out of parcel A.
When do you think you could go down there?
I can, I can, well, I'm gonna talk to her tomorrow and then Wednesday I'll, uh. If, if we have, we can meet possibly Wednesday and then stake a new spot if that works. But, you know, you can point out what, what's still far enough out of the, outside the building for you to, that'll work and, and get it out of parcel A if that's better for you.
Well, we have the property lines marked, so, um. If you can come out Wednesday, that'd be, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Um, yeah, if you can, uh, shoot me an email, um, and, uh. I'll, I'll, I'll get with Eileen and Lori and kind of get my ducks in a row and then we can, we can schedule a time for Wednesday afternoon.
Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Have a good evening.
You too, bye.
The next item on our agenda is our continuing effort for Citizen Dialogues. Our seven o'clock Citizens input is designed to have, uh. Two five minute time slots for anyone who wishes to, uh, request as such. Uh, this is probably the eighth or so meeting that we've had this and we've had, uh. Two walk-ins, we have none tonight, so we'll move on from that agenda, but we are always accessible. At seven ten, we are pleased to announce, so we're welcome, Rob Lucier, our new town planner. Rob had his first day on the job today. Rob is, uh, best known for his work on the planning board. Uh, Rob, if you would, uh.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We have on the docket for anyone following along is the MBTA Communities update and anything else you want to touch on, Rob, welcome.
Rob was actually the co-chair on that. Obviously he had to step down. He'll still be attending those meetings. Uh, in an ex officio capacity, but one of the things that I asked him to do was keep the board and update on that. I know. Sahan's been on that committee, but, uh, it'd be good to get a refresh on where we are and where we're going. Anything else is.
There's also an interesting article, the Boston Globe had a. Full write-up on the MBTA Communities, if anyone wants to read further.
This is just a very brief. Presentation. I have a few copies of it, so here you go. No problem. We have a, a short agenda too, so I'll try to make this as quick as possible. All right, so. So as you are all aware. All right, now we're good. Um, so as you're all aware, we have to comply with the section three A MBTA Communities Law. Which I know that it's been discussed here in these meetings previously, so I. Really just wanted to present kind of an update on where the, uh, Bellingham Subcommittee, the direction they've gone in and where we are right now. With complying with, uh, the requirements of the state is basically saying that we have to. So. Um, basically, going back to, I think we've had, probably about five meetings now, I think. And, you know, we've discussed as a Subcommittee. The direction that we should go in because we pretty much have three options. You can either try and, and fight the, the zoning. You can, um, try and meet the guidance or the, the regulatory, um, requirements. And provide as much housing as possible. Or you can try and meet the regulatory requirements and try and. Deter as much development as possible. Um, we, as the Subcommittee, decided that it would be best to try and. Meet compliance. But try and put the overlay in an area where, um, development probably would not necessarily occur. And we would not see the full seven hundred fifty units built and see if we can utilize what's already existing. So basically, we've come up with two areas. What we need to meet for the requirements, this is kind of an overview of what was discussed previously, but our minimum area would need to be fifty acres. Half of it has to be contiguous, so we, if we do multiple areas, has to be a minimum of twenty-five acres for one area. And then the other portion, if you want to split it on more, you could do, um, five acre parcels at a minimum. They can't be any less than five acres. We need to meet, um, seven hundred fifty units, so that is, doesn't have to be constructed necessarily. It just needs to allow zoning that would allow that number by right. And then if you do the calculation, seven fifty divided by fifty, that requirement for the density is fifteen units per acre. So. The two areas that we looked at, that we're primarily focusing on, there's the North Main Street site, which is the Charles turn. Um, that area, which I have maps and I'll show that next, but. That area is forty-nine acres. There's two lots, the Charles, and then there's an area behind it or a lot behind it that. It has some upland, but it's mostly wetlands, hence why it's forty-nine acres. The whole forty-nine acres couldn't be developed without filling in wetlands, which would not be possible. And with that, um, our consultant with, uh, Barrett Planning Group. She ended up taking that area and basically putting in different factors, zoning factors. And was able to come out with a gross density for that lot of eighteen point nine units per acre. And I can kind of get into that a little bit later on where that calculation comes from. But the second site is the Mechanic Street site, which is, uh, currently the Curtis Apartments. And that area is eighteen point five acres. The unit capacity for that is three hundred sixty-nine units with a density of twenty-one point one units per acre. So what that looks like, this is the North Main Street area, which is the Charles. See, it's a little bit difficult to see, but obviously here that purple outline is the total. Uh, overlay that we're looking at. And the Charles lot is basically this front area. You can kind of see the thin line kind of falls in this white area, which is all upland. The dark green is all wet, so you can see that a majority of the site isn't actually developable. Which is why you'll see for our total area that we're designating for this overlay is going to be over the fifty acres. And that's because part of the area that we're designating is not developable. However, there is some upland area that can be developed, which is located on the lower side of the screen, in the lower portion of this overlay. Um, so that's the North Main Street site. The other site is the Mechanic Street site, AKA, which it's the existing Curtis Apartments, which. The Curtis Apartments are currently located where I have the cursor along Mechanic Street, the south side. And then towards the east, there's a few smaller lots, which are currently undeveloped right now. Um, actually, there might, there's an industrial building, I think, on one of them, correct?
Or inside services and there's the white.
Yeah. So those are what those smaller lots are. I just. So that's what these smaller lots are. And. With that, with those two areas, we meet the required area, unit yield and unit densities. Um, we're a little bit over, which is good, because right now what our consultant is going to look at is potentially getting a memo. Over to the state to get a compliance report done essentially. We don't know if we're gonna get that back in time for, uh. When it's time to, to vote on this, but. We're hoping that it happens.
That's voted at a town meeting in November.
Correct, yep, yeah. So the next step is basically, we're going to be going into our second phase. Of the overlay discussions essentially with our consultant. And we're. Basically, this looks like it works. Now it's kind of time for public outreach to happen. Um, we're currently working on getting some dates and times to figure out when that's going to happen. Um, and luckily, our consultant's also gonna help us out with the public outreach side of things as far as documentation. Presentations, just some insight on the best way to present this to the public. And we are, yeah, gearing up for the November town meeting to put this to a vote is ultimately what's happening, so. That's pretty much what I have, just an overview of where we're at and kind of the direction that the, the Subcommittee has taken.
So it minimizes the impact, obviously, of this because, and as far as the neighborhoods go, the housing already, I guess, so. It's potential that there could be some additional units at each of them. Um, we know that the Curtis wants to put another building up front, which is, makes sense because they cleared all that area. Um, they're, they're looking at having control of that house as well as they already have control of that other building. It, it makes sense and, and, um, if that's the worst of it, I think we, I think we come out somewhat unscathed.
Why was it the perception initially that it had to be new development and that changed?
It evolved. I think it evolved. I, I, this guidance wasn't out there early on, but I know, um. I know that the state has been trying to, to look at ways to, to minimize the, the impact on communities.
If you look at that, why wouldn't every town do this and say all the houses are already built, we're done?
Some towns want to create more zoning. They, they do want the, the density, but you're right, a town like Rentham though, they don't necessarily have. The apartment complexes that we have.
Right, so they'd have to develop.
They could probably put it over the Rentham Village, but what they gotta be capable of, let's say retail really does tank. Someone could build those seven hundred and fifty units right there.
Do it right across the street, that's bacon forever.
And I think some towns are, are starting to, I don't want to say smarten up, but just kind of change their direction. I know. I was actually at the Medway meeting because I was presenting at the planning board, uh, for another project, but. Um, they were looking at ultimately putting this on raw land. It was farm, which. That would have probably been an issue. We didn't want to see.
Most surprising thing to me is that you can actually designate undeveloped land.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're gonna find out once the model is built and submitted, you know, they get back to us.
Yeah, the thing is, the, the consultants are all approved by, by, uh, the Executive Office of Living Communities. And they're paying for it, so the, the state is, so we, we gotta hope that the consultant is, is right on. She's very confident with.
And so is there a risk? Some places that are, that have wetlands, that they could build and just force the change, for instance. In this picture here, this area is listed where they could reclassify the green and say, and move the, the wetlands to that location.
Yeah, I mean, you can do replication areas for wetlands, but it's gonna be tricky because you'll basically fall into, um.
That's pretty close to WS and we're doing, right?
And our exposure is a hundred units. That's because we've already got three hundred units there. So our exposure is limited, even if they do figure out a way to use the upland, it's not like.
I think the clarification was, you know, it's, uh, they, we want to see overlay, um, on all different areas. Shop and plazas. I think that was the last, um, information we got, I remember. That they wanna do like a multi-use and, um, so they, they tried to open up the door, I think the pushback when it happened. And I think they kind of changed the language a little bit, maybe? Language there, but I think maybe they, it's explanation of it, maybe just changed a little bit or.
Are you talking about the, um, the state or?
The state, yeah.
Um, yeah, I know they do have a component where you can do, you know, uh, basically retail or commercial and multi-use, basically.
You don't need to get so technical, but I think you might be on the right track, or you know.
Yeah, and there were discussions on plenty of other areas, um, in town. I know there was, like, one of the ideas was to potentially utilize a mixed use in the center of town. Because I know there's some areas that could use some, some TLC in the center of town, but, you know, ultimately. You're kind of. I don't know if it would be the greatest idea to utilize this, these regulations for something like that. You're kind of opening yourself up to. A significant amount of risk, so that's why we kind of decided to go with this route.
I do have one question. I was approached at town meeting, so I just want to make sure of this, the special meeting we had. This, this has nothing to do with migrants coming to Bellingham.
No.
I thought so. I was, I was asked, oh, are you building this for, for, for? Other people and I said, no, to my knowledge, this is just in general MBPA Communities Act, so I just want to go on record. This has nothing to do with groups of people coming to Bellingham.
Right, okay.
Well, you've got your hands full because obviously we've been had a, uh, part-time town planner and I think just to publicly acknowledge that. Jim Cuffer gave many years to the town of Bellingham and has done an extraordinary job. But obviously his distance and his part-time status, uh, became untenable. And we are very fortunate to have you on board. You're welcome.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. So happy to be here.
It's great to have somebody that has roots in town and.
Michael, it's always nice to see our young people come back.
That's absolutely correct.
I say, I never left.
Well, thank you. Clock drops in, uh, oh.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh, next up is an update from, uh, Sahan of the Open Space Committee.
Yeah, I did a couple of, um, my eyes are pleased, so you can see, you know, I'm gonna start kind of talk about it. I'll read it and then I'll give you.
Yeah, will you save me copies too, please?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I can email it to you though, actually, if you like it, if it's gonna be easier and.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So, um, I believe somewhere around, um, last fall meeting and our Conservation, uh, Commission, uh. Administrator, um, Hannah started to put in some work together and then, you know, um. Tried to kind of, you know, to look into the Open Space Committee and then, uh, that was, I think, the first time when we started with that committee together. And, um, she, um, put quite a bit of work, uh, behind the scene. Um, I think, um, she asked a bunch of, uh, questions, um, sent out surveys, I think, as well as at the town, uh, meeting, last fall on meeting. Uh, we gathered quite a bit of data and, uh, once we committee, um, established and, uh, we kind of hit the ground and then. Start to work on it and then try to identify that some of the things, what our, uh, citizens were asking. Or, uh, what they wanna do with the open space, so forth and so on. Um, actually Dennis is, um, in that, he's been in that committee with me and I think, you know, it's, uh. It's absolutely fantastic stuff we did so far and, um, some of the, you know, um, things, you know, we did. In a matter of few months, uh, after the bunch of meetings, um, basically we updated, uh, some of the mapping. Um, around town, identified some of the old trails and then, uh, some of the areas that actually wasn't on the maps, I think, you know, some of the signage. Um, as well as, uh, what we want to do with the, um, open space. Or if we can create more, uh, um, open space or recreational, uh, space around town and as well as. Uh, we reached out to a few of the constituents. If they have any areas, if they would like to donate or add into the open space, um, so forth and so on. And, um, it's, and beside that, while we were looking at it and, um, the Dennis. Um, brought that up, that, um, CPA, which is the Community Preservation Act. And, um, so I think it was established back in, uh, two thousands and, um. Quite a bit of towns are actually involved on this and, um, I think under ninety-six cities and towns.
More than fifty percent.
Yeah, it's, um, and I think since then they raised, uh, for three point four billion dollars. And, uh, they created thirty-six thousand ninety-eight. Thirty-six thousand and ninety-eight acres of open space preserved. Three thousand seven hundred outdoor recreation projects, including ball fields, trails, parks, so forth and so on. It's been touched and then, um, basically I'm assuming they needed attention or they kind of updated, um, with this act. And, um, eleven thousand five hundred, uh, housing units created, um, as well as eighteen thousand has been exported. And, uh, seven thousand one hundred historic preservation, uh, projects been included with this, um, CPA. So what we're trying to do is actually we're trying to get all the data, as much of the information as possible and then, uh. Um, we're gonna probably present a bunch of stuff around town. And then, um, inform our, uh, citizens and constituents and explain, uh, what's the CPA is about. And then, um, just, uh. Provide a little bit more details, um, what we need to do and then if the, um, what we're looking to do is eventually if we adopt this. And, uh, there are definitely benefits to it. Of course, at the end, um, the, our, um, town residents are gonna decide that. But I think there are huge benefits to it because, uh, every, um, dollar has been matched. Uh, from the statewide community preservation trust fund. Am I?
Which is funded by, uh, these that are, are taken in at the county from, uh, real estate transactions. From our community, so we get a piece of that money back to match whatever we raised, uh, up to three percent as well as one percent.
So it's a, it's a great, um, initiative and, um, we're gonna gather more information and then we're gonna start to actually passing that information throughout town. And, um, let people get a little familiar with and then, uh, we'll, uh, take it to the next step.
Yeah, so I would, I would, if I could, I would just add two points on that. I mean, it's. I liken the CPA to, uh, what was done with the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Administration. Um, as getting. Dollars matched.
Yeah.
Um, as part of the Maple Gate, the solar project, I had a. Two-hour discussion with the principals of the Charles River Watershed Association and we talked about the CPA. Again, this, this flyer, uh, I've, I've seen before. Bellingham is not going to just jump on board and say, yes, tax me more. Uh, but I think one of the things that the Select Board can do is adjust. Our split tax rate. And to use that as an example, we're currently at point nine three. If we were to consider going from point nine three to point nine two. We would effectively be lowering people's residential tax rate. Adding the Community Preservation Act to make it net neutral. And effectively, the larger warehouses and businesses in town would bear. An added burden, admittedly, but the residents of the town who are gonna benefit from CPA funds. Would have zero impact. Making that work timing-wise is a problem because one, you have to drop the CPA and trust that this board is going to do a. An adjustment to the split tax rate and to do, they almost have to be done in sequence because you wouldn't do one without the other. The only way to sell it to the residents is a neutral change. Um, and yes, it puts more of a burden on businesses, but with one-third of the town being larger businesses and. I think the one person, that one entity that gets screwed is the. Smaller businesses, so that's something we have to kind of walk through, but that's how you. That's like how you sell it.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's like, you know, the special um, town meeting we had, and I think that some of the residents got up and spoken. Um, the how much they like to see, you know, it's um. You know, they have more open space, so forth so on, and then even like a private conversations we had. And I think this can allow us um, to provide more uh, recreational as well as maybe open space. So green space for our uh, residents.
Yeah.
I mean, just we live right next to Charles River, but you know, it's uh, we can actually beautify it, and then this will allow us to do that. And as I said, I know some steps are has to be taken, but on the other hand, you know, we can give one. Quick example of it, you know, it's, I think if I'm not mistaken, Medway used the CPA. Um, redo their um, uh, Chalk Park.
Right.
And uh, that's what they use, and then um, I think the Franklin used the CPA, um, to purchase some of the. The lands became or parcels available, um, instead of going to some developer or um. To be built so forth so on, and they actually bought it and then they add into their open space conservation land trust. I'll just leave it with that and then, you know, we'll gather more information and then probably we can talk about a later one.
I think would be interesting is if Heidi could do a comparison of point nine three to point nine two. Because the CPA is not a hard number, it's a number that you pick, and if uh.
Could we, I mean, could we, um, I know you mentioned the smaller businesses hitting hard, can we just keep it to businesses with excellent employees and all of it?
Well, I think that gets to the ten percent exemption that we can put on the split tax rate.
This this exemption, that's exactly what it does.
Yeah, that's how you you get around it.
Are you talking about a certain percentage um, being extracted from the tax, you know, from.
Yeah.
Like three to two percent or something like.
Or as little as one, I think I think you can do as little as one percent.
Yeah, but one to three percent, you can do one point one to up to three, so if the split tax rate changed it by one point two and we wanted to adopt a one point two. We're adding one point two percent to CPA, and if you double that, it becomes real dollars if you build it up over. You know, four or five years and you.
I I could see having a small percentage for that and and try to use that to enhance parcels that we own. You know, conservation parcels, but to to take that money and to purchase new land, you kinda, you're taking money out of the tax roll. I see it in other towns, you know, you're taking these, you they're buying these parcels, but you know, they're also taking it out of the tax roll too.
Yeah, well, I mean, Chalk Chalk Park in Medway is a great example of something that was just a a needed huge upgrades.
And existing, I can see existing, using it for existing enhancement or even developing our own land.
You could take a a parcel like High Street uh, Fields, and if I said you wanted to put a. Dog park in there and you needed to do a myriad of things.
Yes.
Uh, instead of going to town meeting and asking for a capital request, those funds can just be tapped.
I know Ann and myself were on the library meeting, Strategic Planning Committee. One of the things that was brought up was outdoor space at the library for for reading, you know, to read outdoors, I mean, that would be perfect for it.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, I, this is obviously, you know, this is just the CPA, just we opening up all different avenues, but. The part of the open space um, um, committee, as I said, you know, it's um, if anybody would like to have any uh, parcels. Or uh, lands, you know, it's uh, they don't wanna, they don't want to be a um, built anything on it. I'm just throwing out there, you know, it's um, I think, and I just kind of um, kinda reading my mind and then, you know, try to express myself over here. And um, if um, we'd like to add that on the open space as well as conservation. And then uh, we will definitely take the initiative and then we can utilize it for our uh, citizens.
Ex- example, the the community building in the north end of town, you could repurpose it, if we ever built a new fire station, we wanted to.
Yeah.
Repurpose the south station or anything of that nature, there's a whole host of things, but that's uh, down the road and we got a one sell up first.
Yeah, I appreciate it probably once time, and then it is uh, we'll um, gather more data and then, you know, we'll definitely provide that in the near future.
Uh, we're at gifts and grants right now, uh, so would someone like to read the motion?
I move that the board is elected to accept the gifts and grants as listed here and. We said expenditures to be entered in the direction of the parties noted.
Second.
First and second, and so on, second.
Yeah.
For anyone watching on TV, we have seven donations specific to the fire prevention account, I believe that was in someone's name, isn't it?
It was, yeah, Michael and Mar.
Yep.
Marsha.
Marsha.
Marsha, yeah, so we're very grateful for those gifts. We have a first and second, all of them favor say aye.
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 None. Next up, we have a March abatements, who's got those?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to obey two thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-seven cents for March.
Second.
First and second, and uh, regression, hearing none, seeing none, all of them favor.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
None, four oh. Over on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Mister uh, Mister Chairman, um. I would like them well, involve the accept the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four uh, meetings as presented.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all of them favor.
Aye.
None, four oh. Um, anything on the old business? Anything on the new business?
Mister Chair, I got a few items. Um. After uh, attending the uh, this this special. Meeting we had last week, um, and hearing a lot of the concerns of the residents. Um, I have spoken to Mister Ferain uh, about this uh. The um, a lot of the concerns the residents had didn't have to do exactly with the specific. Um, amendment on on hand, it actually had to do with with uh, some uh, an issue that wasn't going away, which is the traffic. So I reached out to Chief Fitzgerald and um, I I I think Mister Ferain said he might, he might attend. I have a meeting with Chief Fitzgerald and Sergeant Padula, um, to address a lot of the concerns. Um, when I spoke with Dennis, uh, one of the concerns is possibly um, using our our new speed bumps. Um, to slow traffic down on Maple Street, uh, I think that we could put as many as needed.
Yeah, I I mean, what what I suggested was that you go to the traffic committee.
Yeah, go to the traffic, yeah.
Considered by public safety and.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I mean, some of the the cons- the issues I brought up apparently were not valid, I was thinking possibly doing a turn restriction from Prospect Street onto Lake Street. Um, cause I do see track and trailers trying to make that turn and then causing, I think, in my opinion, a danger.
Yeah.
Um, to to the to the property that that's right there and and to the other drivers on the road. You have the track and trailers trying to make that that wide turn on on the lake. And you know, if the traffic backing up, you you have nowhere to go.
And I think that corner is that Franklin or Bellingham? It's right at the town line.
That was, it it's, yeah.
That's, that's, Rob, you might know, that that whole intersection's gotta be redesigned as part of the Prospect Lake Street.
That is the discussions, I know, cause I know that the layout is actually a little bit off from what is. The the actual road is off from what the layout.
Cause there's more takings on the Bellingham side by the recycling center or the neighbors, cause this all rocks at that house.
I believe that the roadway layout is actually closer to the residence house, which is on, I think that's Franklin. That's Prospect Street.
And then the other thing I brought up to to Dennis is, um, you know, we had the one resident that was uh, extremely vocal. Uh, about the traffic on High Street, about making High Street residential traffic only between the hours of like nine and nine and five or something like that. And Dennis says that has to go to DOT, and the odds of that getting approved are slim to nine.
Very difficult.
So if we could go to the traffic committee with the possibility of doing more speed bumps. You know, just just on those areas, you know, the the Maple Street and High Street, you know, it's not gonna fix the problem, but it's gonna slow these vehicles down where they're not shaking houses. Um, and disturbing our residents.
Is there a um, I that I know the bridge is very narrow, it's like still big trucks go there?
High Street?
High Street?
Yeah, it's close.
Yeah, I suppose, there's a weight limit, am I?
They do what the GPS takes them there, but they don't even leave them.
Yeah, they can go down there anyway, you can, we post it, they run over the signs, you know, it's really tough.
Well, that's gonna be one of my conversations is is enforcement, uh, with these with these drivers. Um, the one I use, there is one specific delivery driver, they're actually right behind Rapid Refill. Um, like I told Dennis, when you're at the the um, you're coming from one forty and you're at the light of Rapid Refill. And these trucks, I mean, come flying down down the the uh, left-hand side of the road to turn. Uh, onto West Maple Street to head to their warehouse down by WB Mason. Um, not, yeah, it's a big reason, um, Men's Express, they're right behind Rapid Refill. I see the trucks, they get the green logo right on the side and they 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 go right, I mean, from from Corelic Farms right down the middle of the road. To turn left onto onto Maple Street at Rapid Refill, it it's a hazard, I've seen so many near accidents, it's. Something needs to be done about it, so I'm gonna talk to Chief about enforcement, Dennis recommended maybe having Sergeant Padula go or pay them a visit. Um, because these are, these are what the residents concerned are, I mean, I think we need to address it.
Do you um, do you mind to share that, um, Serge? Um, you can just forward to me, because I'm on the traffic committee with the Sergeant Padula as well as um, Jesse and a few others.
Yeah.
Now, we can actually discuss it and uh, because Jesse actually just created a bunch of forms and uh, request. Um. This um, particular things, you know, it's um, actually, we can, we can look at it definitely.
Yeah, after after the meeting, I will um, I'll update the board, and I I know, I think Dennis said, well, if I get the. The um, the go-ahead or the the support from the police department, the traffic committee will probably look a little more favorable upon it.
Yeah. Cause there were a few other requests, you know, it's on that um, topic, and it's uh, for the speed bumps.
True.
And um, on some of the residential streets actually uh, came to our attention. Jesse and I think the Sergeant Padula was uh, looking at it, um, the cost wise too.
Well, I know, if if you go on any of the side roads, and I I use Providence as an example, cause that's where I go, I mean. Every side road in Providence has at least two or three of them, you know, and they're clearly marked, I know you brought up insurance issues.
Yes, it's, it's definitely becoming more commonplace in communities, but you know, something to bring to the to the committee and talk about. I I think the ones we put on Elbow Street are a little too insignificant, we'd like something a little bit more pronounced than those, but it was a good start to see.
There were different styles, so to, Sergeant Padula actually was, if I'm not mistaken, uh, brought that up. So there are some actually you can do permanent, there are uh, certain ones actually you can put it in and then you can take it out at a certain time or the year. In the winter, so there are different options, definitely, you know.
There is, there is actually one house, um, it's it's in, it's on the Rentham side. Um, i- if you actually, and I I just, I just noticed it because it sticks out, yeah, on the Rentham side of um, Rentham Road. Uh, they actually have uh, the one-way spike strips in their driveway.
Wow, oh, boy.
It's at the very, it's at the very end, if you if you go over it one way, you're fine, you go over it the other way, you you pop and your tires.
Try to make friends.
As you mentioned Saturday, uh, Parkin Street is.
Turn around, yeah.
Parkin Street is a similar cut through like Elmo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's that, I know that's what you you had said, we're just gonna, we're gonna initiate it with that, yes, with that one, yeah.
And that's the problem with High Street too.
Yeah.
High Street is a cut through, people like to cut through it, but you got that bridge and there should not be any big trucks going down High Street. That is ludicrous.
Bridge isn't rated though, you're right.
Yeah, you're right.
But that's all, that's all.
Great, um, I don't know if it's new business, but just as a reminder, Hillary will be putting together the executive session minutes that still have to be approved prior to this second. No more?
Yes.
There's nothing previously that's been approved.
We're in good shape, there's only those two that um, are not to be released, they've been approved but not released.
And they still may need to be held.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Town administrator?
Just a couple of quick ones, great job by Dylan Lavanti with the Earth Day and all the volunteers that were here, and I understand it went extremely well, so. Super worker, I think it was the most successful one ever, Jesse's supposed to be back on Wednesday, so. He's uh, as you know, a new father, booklets for the annual town meeting, we just finished reviewing them, they should be out later this week. Um, and of course, as always, we'll have the motions done and uh, out to all the uh, all the board members. Um, and good news on the senior center, um, improvements there in the kitchen, I know Tim was down there today. Construction is actually officially begun today.
Yeah, we took up the pavement.
Put up the pavement.
We're digging a hole, he was gonna dig it, but it's gonna pour tomorrow, so. He's gonna come back, he'll wait till it rains, so it doesn't fill up with water, but.
Yeah, of course, the GP, the the GPW administrative offices are being trained, and I know Tim was down there uh, in and out, but it, the training has started down there.
GPW?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, it's it's um.
You'll see.
They're running the roof right now, so.
Right.
We just can't do the back section because the wire is.
Yeah.
But um, they they have other stuff to do, so hopefully they come through and and come up with a solution for that.
Yeah.
Um, we we fixed the retaining wall at the um, at the headquarters uh, fire station.
Right.
That was uh, kind of dilapidated and fallen, and that was completed, so it looks good.
Stone.
It's, we just did, we went so far down and replaced it with wood and put some supports in that it needed, that it didn't have. So it's all put back together, looks good.
Yeah, and then speaking with the the fire chief, I I know we talked to some members who have asked, it does look like that. Flat truck is going to be repaired as opposed to replaced, uh, there's a company that's reviewing it or. And uh, doing the analysis down in Pennsylvania, does not believe the structural damage done to it, but these all are, it will be replaced, so. And that could take up to a year, the impact, so a little bit of time, but that's where we're at with that.
I would just add, if anyone is watching on Cable Eight, uh. Chief Miller had a uh, excellent session on Saturday, if anyone wanted to walk in. On the override, he's doing another one two weeks out at the station.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and he's taping a show on Cable Eight this Thursday, that'll probably be ready to broadcast next week.
That's great.
Yeah, and you have anything?
No, I just, um, I I just wanna thank everybody for last Saturday, there were so many people that came out. That we actually ran out of gloves and bags and vests for for the workers, but. It was a great show of effort and and uh, residents who came out, it was wonderful and they got a lot done. Oh my God, they got so much done, worked hard.
It was great.
With that, having nothing else, I'll extend a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None? Very good, our next meeting, Hillary is.
Um, it's.
Twenty?
May twentieth?
Twenty twenty eighth.
That's the month.
Seconds there.
Yeah.